Yeah.
Did you get my email?
Yes.
Are you married yet?
Not yet.
You know, watch some hard boys.
Are you engaged, Kristen?
I am.
Who do you get engaged to?
Brian Harden.
Oh, congratulations.
Good to meet you.
Yes.
We're gonna be like, Kristen, uh, make sure it's, it's all actors and I think we're really going up to, I don't think we should need to see the whole place. But that's okay.
Yeah.
It makes everyone.
Yeah, it only takes years.
Dunker.
Yeah, I have you, this is the one I like. You were laughing.
I'm always laughing.
All right, man.
I'll wear my ear on always.
And it's hot in here.
It is.
I'm just saying it felt pretty good.
Yeah. We're, we're your number 17.
Yeah.
Morning.
I was morning in the two's.
I mean, that's fine.
I need to get with me on what, on schedule on that stage too, for all y'all advances here.
Okay, um.
I've only got one call so far since, 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 and that's the run for the children down here.
Yeah, turning off.
It's already on the book for him, but.
I know.
I'm looking at that.
I'm hard to believe I'm a.
Good, you're on your own.
Um, can we just go into.
Yeah.
I hope you have a good meeting there.
Go stand there.
Yeah.
And there's additional one on Mars. I'm trying to get it.
I didn't do much the other day. And that way, if somebody else called on them, yeah.
Let me down on that.
So I don't need to like, text her and announce.
He'll be here.
Okay. I'd like to, I'd probably pay my own way and, uh, I think it'll be good.
He'll be here.
Oh, really? Okay.
What's he doing?
Yeah, to get the, get rid of the winter coat, maybe.
Listening.
Just jiggering.
Trying to figure out how it works.
Which, what, what do you go?
Which is one, that one, seven?
Seven.
Oh, you got them.
Oh, yeah, Crocodiles can't average it, Sam.
Yeah.
It's a very controversial topic.
Yeah.
Good morning.
How are you?
Great. Are you?
Great.
How are you?
Good.
Good to see you. Are you still involved in Crocodiles business?
I am.
What's your role in it now? No, he is, uh, consult with himself.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, kinda having to fill in the gaps for.
Okay.
Krista right now. Kathy, I guess. Starts tomorrow.
Well, kind of on the edge.
Still involved. I'm sure he goes off the gun. That was a busy day. That was a busy day. It was a great day.
You're not getting changed on the fourth.
Saw that, okay.
It's still April ninth.
We'll get this in. I think we should make a little more, little more controversial.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. What makes it thinkable with a bit more, really?
What gets them to come down there?
National headline. Maybe, maybe a portion of the run.
Yes.
We could have cannon fire.
Ooh, yes, yes.
Uh-huh.
We could react, maybe like a.
That would be fair.
They probably run faster, huh?
That would be very controversial. I hear a PETA talking, gonna kind of protest the unethical treatment of Crocodiles.
What did you, and the armadillo races?
That's.
Okay.
You really don't. Are we concerned about leprosy? Particularly that are the only other animal that carries.
Yes.
Remember I told you that other.
Wait, wait, you've caught an armadillo, fried it up?
Fried it like a chicken.
You're kidding. What, what, what inspired you to eat an armadillo?
I was young.
You'll get leprosy.
No, we just thought, you know, love.
I have, I guess.
Okay, can we go?
Now we're talking.
My brother, his son goes to Camp Water.
Okay.
I tag back until the, I took, took that other, and I'm like, and the only one that went, the blind one on there.
Caught an armadillo.
I said, I'm like, and.
Was it kind of on each side? Yeah. In the middle of camp and so the crocodiles, no one can catch it after that. The rest of the camp, it's an armadillo.
I don't know why they got a.
My gosh. Oh, wow.
I think I see. That was pretty funny.
That is. That would, yeah.
I'm not sure he was invited.
Let's also spray paint our, our deals. That would. Yes, yes, yes.
I mean, that's pretty creative.
That, that is very creative.
I wonder if you would lose those.
No, none of my.
Very.
My key?
Yep.
Talking about leaving your mark.
It is. It's starting to actually be one more off, it's time to get rid of the winter coat.
You love what?
Okay.
You said, do it before you ate?
It was over. Sorry. Yes. Start the training. More. I think he said they keep us. We're dedicating a week to us.
I.
Actually, yes. Time to agree that, yeah. Take a, take a. Push them out to the lake.
I'm not having that.
Well. We couldn't find you. Turned off the, well, we were, he was, he was gone, we got, we were.
We had to work.
Very powerful. Turns out it's. He would even do it, make us.
Yeah.
I'm good to go.
We, he, he got a, he got.
Nothing I'll have to.
We're not popping back out like that. Talk about, you just. Right, yeah. You can't do what he does. Pay it back. That was scary.
We have a red corner there, only sound like that. Can I get that right?
Everything.
He's been on it.
Oh, that's funny.
I do, you don't do that.
Where's Kevin? Because that is a little bit, if you came along more and didn't burn it, it's kinda, kinda. All the way. On each side.
I'm sure Grant's. Grant now? What I did, like, we can say, uh-oh, it's a private company, okay?
No, they are not private companies.
That's right.
All he heard was Grant.
I heard a name. B worm. Okay.
Please not worry.
Good morning. County Commissioner's Court. Now being in session, setting up a regular meeting Monday, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at nine thirty-one AM. Make note that, uh, this meeting posted the nine forty time required, that all members are present, and if it's convened to prove stand for any. Do you? May.
Okay.
Okay, please, Val, we. Our dear Most Gracious Heavenly Father, we regret for many blessings you bring to us, we regret for this nation, we regret for this state, for this county. We ask your blessings upon all of those above, and we ask your blessings upon those of our community and our state and our nation that have stood in the way, whether foreign or domestic, in the way of harms avenue, and in protection of those rights and constitutional rights and freedoms that we've enjoyed and we've come to know and love so well, although we take them for granted many times. Uh, we, we're thankful for all of these, uh, members of this court. Uh, we ask that, uh, we look to you, each one of us, for guidance, and, uh, that we act always in the best interest of our citizens and in accordance with your will. Congrats, I would pray, in the name of.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the name of the God, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Item number three, public comments, announcements, presentations, usually do a little COVID thing, um, don't have much except, uh, this report from our, uh, Chrome Services area, which includes Wichita, Clay, Jack, Young, Ardman Monday, Baker, Will Barker. One of those in total, uh, looks like, uh, COVID-related census of one hundred and eight, particularly in Young County. It looks, appears here that, uh, we have four, uh, census of four COVID, this is happening Friday, the eleventh, COVID patients in the hospital. And that's about, that's about the markup of the report that I have. Anybody else study things that might need to be mentioned that's not on here?
If y'all would keep Sherry in my office and parachute her for that field last week.
And, yeah, I, I got set up, I didn't, I got that, and, and because. Yeah, we'll keep her, not all forever. What's in the packets are received, hotel occupants' packs, uh, for Wildcat Ranch, that's seven thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars, sixty-three cents, that'd be the decent report. Also, um, that, uh, hot tags for Boulder Tea Ranch, they, they report nothing. There's appreciation letters included in your, uh, package from. Honley Hospital District, my booth, and their staff over there for, um, to the Commissioner's Court for the contribution of the, uh, ARPA funds, um, for new ambulances, for new ambulances, for Honley Hamilton Hospital, and then one Shane Cornell from Grand Hill Hospital, stating essentially the same thing, uh, that you're a two thousand dollars that we granted to each of those, um, hospital districts for the purchase of ambulances. Uh, and then we have tax, such collector, um, report for the January activity in the Christmas support. Is there anything else that might have been, is there anybody out there who wish, wishes to mention something that, on this turn, or. If not, we're going.
Early loading started today. Early loading started today, early. Blowed it out and blew it up. I was, I was, somebody said, I got some. He's at it, they were down.
I guess, that started at eight o'clock this morning?
Eight to five, let me do that.
That's pretty good, right? Item number four, Senator County Clerk's minutes previous meeting, that'd be January the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, or are there any additions, corrections, deletions that need to be made there?
We just need to add from that line out of number eight, the bottom, five O's, four O's.
Item number eight.
And I got one more change.
Item number eight.
All the way down through, it's a long way down, all the way down.
Some of them say four O's, some of them say five O's.
Okay. Like that, that's four O's.
Should be five O's.
Could be, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Some of them, some, every other one O's is like, four O's, five O's, four O's.
And it should be five O's.
And also, item number nine.
Yes, I was looking at that, I didn't mention.
Need to add, yeah, regional medical centers of that, as you say.
Two hundred fifty, probably, two hundred fifty for grand.
I didn't get to review that.
Yep.
Okay, you catch all that?
Yes, sir.
Motion, Mr. Wiley, uh, with corrections. I love you. Correctional say.
Yes.
Second by the Mr. Fresh, on favor, and that happens. Item number five is considered credit financial report updates on securities, uh, we have, uh, inter-packed list of those that. I plan, uh, thirteen point six thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars, and the pledges from there, and also have a report on that.
Me.
One million? Two hundred sixty thousand dollars.
Me?
One million?
One million.
Yes. Yes. So move on that.
Yes, thank you. All favor.
Uh, no.
Um, we, uh, can I, under bullet point underneath that is discussed, it's a resolution, substitution, and/or withdrawal of security pledges, uh, held in trust by Texas Intensive Bank. We do this several times during the course of the year, uh, this trade, I guess, the sale replacement of that, may have a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars above. What did he say?
So what?
Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Rogers, on favor, uh. Item number six is considered offer of legislative bills, and.
Vouchers this morning, and. Total of the voucher is one hundred eighty thousand, seven thirty-nine, sixteen, and out of the general is eighty-eight thousand, eight forty-three, twenty-four, and there is Don's butane included in these vouchers.
So they want vouchers?
Uh, motion by Commissioner Pruitt, I say, Senator Rogers, to approve that proposal as presented by our County Auditor, on favor.
And also, um, our next to the last official jail payment was due, it's due tomorrow, so Ann and I electronically sent it over on Friday, supposed to be there by tomorrow. We had put a hundred and fifty thousand in contingency, I think we may have to use it, uh, we only had to write a check for a hundred and ten thousand to put into the debt service. We may have to write a little bit more, there's another interest payment due in August of eleven thousand, five fifty, but, uh, we did make the seven, seven hundred seventy-two thousand, eight hundred dollar payment on, or sent it on Friday, and they're supposed to let it go. So, I guess we did pretty good, and we'll still be getting a few more tax dollars in that debt service fund, so I'm not sure how much. You know, the most, you know, we had to make, I think there was sixteen hundred in there, the money had to use ten thousand.
Might be a little more.
Yes, I, I think so too, because she had gotten a few from the first of February already, and it. Anyway, still, y'all know we made that payment. The next payment's like eleven thousand, something like that, so there's, what, sixteen hundred in it now? So, like I said, it, we only did a hundred and tens to a hundred and fifties, so we still may leave some in contingency.
I hope the goal is to try to keep everything we can spend out of the.
Yeah, we'll have to next year really do that and use all that money, do our last payment next year.
We got last one due.
Yes, the last one due is, is in, I think it's in February of twenty-four.
On your what?
It'll be our last payment, and it's, um, I think it's seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
That has interest there.
That has interest there, the other's no more.
What do you think?
Yeah, because this one I make in August, is interest on.
Item number seven is considered, it's each night, it's January fourth, request for reimbursements, that'd be Penny Baron at four twenty-four, thirty-five, and Savannah Williams at eight hundred and seventy-five, oh, seven. Come on, say. All in favor? At least two of our. I think, in San Antonio, now, still in vote. I think both of the agents are up and running, though, and, uh, quarantined or COVID bothering no more. I hope so. Item number eight's discussed, considered employee bonds, Rob Scott Wallace, I don't probation officer at five thousand, and Kate from the Almose, our new election administrator, five thousand.
So what?
Wiley.
Thank you.
Rogers, on favor? I don't know, I don't know, nobody knows, knows you, uh, Daryl, kind of this month, Daryl, and I believe if I understood correctly, Scott will be, Chief of George, so Scott could be. Good for Daryl. Item number nine, discuss January activity report for the Jail and Sheriff's Office, Honley Sheriff, back of column.
You see, they blow over. Some of the fires, some of the ten fires, pretty tight fires.
The other one, our livestock complaints went down.
A little. Part feeding hay.
What we missed in the fires, Charlie?
Sir?
What was in the fires?
Where?
What?
Oh.
You know the coughing up.
Well, the one that we had out on sixteen, or, um, I was told by some volunteer at Armond that there were power lines on the ground.
Okay.
So I'm pretty sure that's what caused that. We hadn't heard anything different than you.
Just run out of dark canyon, somebody left their truck on fire.
Twice, twice. They get citations. Twice.
Twice.
You know, it's, right now is not a very good time either, because all that snow, we did get in the ice, it's already, it dried up, and we had a lot of hot winds coming up in the next couple of days, and not gonna be good. And, we're still getting calls from people saying, hey, we all we wanna burn it. I'm like, no, I said, Commissioner's Court and County Judge voted that we are on the square of our land, and that's where it needs to be, and so.
It, um, you know, even if we get substantial rain.
It's gonna be a minute.
Current time, it's gonna be a while.
Yes, sir.
We know, or.
We have a lot of, a lot of fuel on the ground right now, so.
We'll, we'll go, we're gonna touch on that.
You know what the bad part of it is, about all that, is that a lot of these folks don't understand that these guys are going out there, buying these fires and risking their lives, I mean, we had one that got burned on the one of the judge's roads, so, I mean, you know, we have to be thinking about everybody else, not just what we're doing, so.
Well, they're volunteers.
Absolutely.
Are they a public servant, just a volunteer?
Yep. And. And that's where it really is irritating, when you have people that wanna do that, walk around here.
Per provisions, they are, do some of those, but.
That has to come with you.
Pretty tough, well, no, that's gotta come from, uh, certified burning plan, and certified burning manager, those things have to be in place.
We have to come as a court to cale that.
No, it's me that. Burning plan's usually filed in my office, but it's, uh, it's protocol thing, it's not, it doesn't. But, you know, if it's for, um, health reasons, or, you know, sanitation reasons.
Right.
The N R C C, or what that is.
Right.
Commission on Environmental Policy, those type burns, new discipline can do that, you know, if it's Farm County, if the necessity for that, or these agricultural burns, where the fire, burn, while we're under the burn ban, there were fires, I, burns, burn plan, written by qualified person, usually a burn manager, and a burn manager on location.
We had that before.
They get out of there too.
They came to court before we okayed it.
And they get out of the trouble.
They do, but they still, you said they had, they came to court, to each other. They came to court, and we okayed it. Still, they still had to do that?
Court doesn't have to, I mean, that's a qualified statutory, um, extension for those third items. No, it wouldn't have to come to court to do that. Sure wouldn't have to have, you know, long as they've got those in place. It'd be great if they know everybody.
Oh, absolutely. So that makes me wonder again, I mean, if somebody has the right stuff going on, can they burn?
If they have those things in place, yes. But it's, um, it's pretty expensive, wrap it tight. And lots of, lots of equipment, lots of, they got to have equipment on the same.
And if our.
Equipment on all that, the burn manager there, yeah, burn manager, you know, a lot of that. Our, um, NRCS people, well, not certified burn manager. They're about to burn a plan, but then, as we would have for when we're not underneath a burn prescription order.
Steve Rigger's the only one I know of that here.
That's what I was gonna ask you.
Burn manager.
Steve.
Steve Rigger's the only one I know of.
I don't know if he's still with us.
There's another guy that just started and writes a two. I can't think of his name. I don't, there is another guy here in town, though, that is.
I don't think Steve is anymore.
I don't know. You know, I'm talking about that works for the USDA office, I can't think of his name.
Interesting.
The one that's called the other day, if you remember. There, he's a younger guy, I can't think of his name.
Okay. Anyway. There's not a whole lot, I mean, besides the ten fires, that's quite good for a month.
Yeah, a little more drubber like the George is, huh?
Mm-hmm. That's always good. Does anybody have any questions? Sure. Hopefully, before we go to the jail. Morning, we have fifty-three in jail, still have one out of county, later coming in. Is that your replacement? No, and you know, since you said that too, I'm gonna give Mitch and find out why, see if we can get an answer to that.
They might have another county, is that still that one person?
No, sir, it's, well, I, yeah. Have another one that he's not really, he's in our custody right now, he just brought it to us. Got your question, yeah, say it.
And you'll get the, uh, email, you know, sir, what the state's done to us on our ones dealing with the, uh, people that are mentally ill, they've run away with some more beds that are available, but they didn't run away with them?
No, I guess I need them.
You know, we've got beds to be, to use, but they run away with them because the problem with some of the people staffing, that they need to staff those won't take the injection, they won't, they won't bypass it, they're right there, so, I'm probably telling them that part.
I know that we had a, had an email idea from North Texas State that wouldn't allow anybody.
You're talking about the mailman? Yes, I'm all right, but, uh, they, uh, they have a change that came out about six weeks ago.
Yeah, and.
You know, they don't do something where if we're gonna outbid inmates, you don't really get reimbursed so much of that. From what I understand, when you go in there, it wasn't a forty-five dollars, two three cents added, that's a year. That's not gonna work. That's one of those things that needs to be looked into, something like that. Our judges should be, take care of people who are not qualified, take care of them.
Right. And, that's the way it is, all it's a thing of Texas.
Now, look what I'm saying, it starts at the top.
Yeah.
Your word matter, your voice.
When you look, we have big, big one last month. Sixteen of those.
Went in, made some more. Yep, pretty big percentage.
Yes, sir. And it's like that all the time.
Yep. Which what happens in that situation, it takes up more of our time being and trading back and forth, you know, doing what we have to do.
And when our county has to pay for that, all this, the state of Texas will do it, too.
Yeah, they're not gonna reimburse them that.
No. Those are the ones that might have been trying to.
Yep. Well, what, in my opinion, they're forcing us to, to come to them and help.
Yeah, which we should be.
Right.
Because what happens is that you're leaving, you're putting your other inmates in there, they're raised at the same time.
Yeah.
We're about to sign both with the, uh, the.
Oh, I know.
Yeah. It was not inflexible. Or not inflexible.
Someone told me Saturday night that he would get with me on, he talked to me some more about it, my house. We'll see.
We'll see if he does.
We'll see if he does.
Can you tell him?
No.
How many did he do?
Yeah. Yeah. We'll see if he does. Do you think you have any questions?
Let's get it.
Thank you, y'all. See if I can meet you sometime, maybe today.
Did we get our setup? Did we get the car?
All over one. Now, one has been, like, we've had the others for two months, I guess.
I have pictures, um, I was waiting on to get that other one so we can put all four of them on there at the same time.
And I think.
To the auction.
We may be able to go ahead and do that.
Okay.
Anyway, without waiting on that one.
I'll need updated mileage because I'm sure the mileage is quite a bit different than what we.
John's driving one like that, I knew you were gonna get his vehicle back.
Yeah, as far as I know, it's become still getting worked on.
He has to use one for a while.
We, we are gonna pull all that equipment out of there, aren't we, Charlie?
All the utilities?
The lady at GoDill said they sell better if they do have it.
I'll tell you right now.
You don't wanna leave.
No, I think what's been going on with, uh.
No, you don't leave them, they give them to me.
Exactly, and I don't trust, I mean, that week, when you start getting people personally, police officers, I don't want us to be calling back on us for a party, that is good for us.
Better handle any radios at work today, I haven't got them yet.
I, we still, we've had them over a year, we haven't presented.
So Mitch is retiring, you know, replacing him?
Yeah. We, uh, uh, maybe, we'll see. It may have my mind yet. So.
What, what do you think, Ron, about that?
As far as I know, we are probably, I think, one or two down in the jail, and we're grounded dispatchable. It's better, I'm not saying worse. But, I think a lot of the two is, you know, much of the deal for us is helping back in October, so. A lot. I appreciate that. Have a good day.
Sure.
Thank you.
Move to number eleven. Yes. Ten oh one, jump down item number eleven. Six, um, open seal bid for sale of one twenty M two motor rotor, pressing through, thank you, Roger.
I received, um, two bids. This is the one I got first. The first one is from the equipment, I love it. That's B, like a B E. Okay, on the twenty eighteen, one twenty M two, they'd like to offer a hundred and fifty-five thousand, six fifty-one. The next one is from J. Jane Merchant.
J. Jane.
Merchant? Yeah, I, I don't know if they've looked down on anything before.
What do you worry?
Okay, they'd like to bid a hundred and seven thousand, seven, seven, seven. Hundred and six, six, six.
What are we seven, a seven, seven?
One oh seven, 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 seven.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Little difference there.
Okay, you get the, uh, paperwork for item number twelve, I'll, uh, type of this, more type of this item here, now, just hang on, I'll, I know what he's doing.
Five nine, I.
Four nine, two. Five, under five, Mary.
Which is a buyback. Yeah.
One sixty-seven, five hundred for the buyback.
Yep.
What was being in?
Very, one sixty-seven.
Fifty-five, sixty-two.
B was one fifty-five, sixty-two.
Everybody's looking, saying, crazy. Well, that's a lot better.
Yeah. Kind of catch this paperwork under wraps on the new motor rotor, nine and twelve, because it did have a trade-in amount. And I've come in, want cash for their trade-in number because it's even higher this year than it was last year this time. So, the bag of used equipment's kind of gone after the past twelve months, so, uh, with that being said, I'm gonna reject the two bids on item ten, will be equipment, J. J. Merchant's.
All right, well.
Yes, on item eleven, yeah.
Reject.
Reject both bids.
Paul Parker?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, item number twelve, just, which, twenty, two thousand, twenty-two, capital, one twenty M two motor rotor, one cap, thank you, Roger.
Well, item twelve, and it's, uh, we got a quote from Jim Russell, I want a cap for a new motor rotor for twenty twenty-two, same size, for one twenty. With the trade-in allowance of one sixty-seven, five hundred for the used machine, or twenty eighteen used machine. They're gonna adjust that on it. With their quote, with their quote, the balance is gonna be sixty-one thousand, two ten, twenty-seven.
That's pretty good.
So, uh, with the trade difference of being sixty-one thousand, I put that in my line as a busted item. And I make the motion to approve this trade.
I'll say.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Wiley, to approve buyback trade-in value on twenty M two, twenty-eight, twenty-eight, any model, on a new one twenty M two, okay, at a sixty-one thousand, two hundred and ten dollars, twenty-seven difference. Paul Parker?
Uh.
There it is.
Oh, good.
Item number ten. Discuss, consider collecting who participate in the Indo and Tiva opioid settlements, the settlements that the Attorney General has reached, or the, um, the Indo was several weeks ago. And this, um, Tiva just came up last week, late last week. Apparently, they're not.
The Tiva, I don't know whether what to end on.
Two, uh, we've got to make that election if we wish to participate, and we've already, we've already done that with the initial election, where they, they had those other settlements, including all together on, for, I believe, for, anything, but we have to go through that process again. We have a subdivision, or a special district elec- election, and lease form of stating that we wish to participate in whatever agreement county will do. Do we want to continue that, Peter?
Move.
Say.
Um, through it. Paul Parker?
Hey, can I, can I, can we go to seventeen, so we can let these people go, because they all came to this?
Okay, well, we're, if the plea is to the court, we'll move to item number seventeen. Discuss, consider review of vendor application, Crawfish County.
I have presented you all with a.
Don't let Grant sit back there.
No. I am, I'm here to advise wherever I can be, sir.
Um, I present to you all with a link in your application, as well as our vendor criteria for acceptance, as well as every single vendor application that we have received so far. So, when we get started, we can start with the first one, which should be, uh, world children. Which, which one's first?
Loving Mat.
Loving Mat.
Loving Mat.
Okay. Mine, mine are in backwards order. Loving Nationals, um, Cheryl Ligon, she participated in Crawfish County last year, and they are from Grand Texas. We offer local candy, substance, oils.
So tell me, what do you want to, yeah, the order says say, okay, or.
Casey, uh, it might be beneficial to look at the, uh, the vendor, uh, criteria and what, what, uh, what type of, uh, event we were hosting here in Crawfish County. I'll report that, this is the, the second year that we've been, uh, putting the, you can not let it run with it, making this a more community and wider reaching event, which we're excited to spotlight important history that we have there.
It was great.
So what we're doing with the vendors is cultivating that experience and adding just a handful of, uh, local vendors, just to benefit those. So, what we're doing with the vendors is cultivating that experience and adding just a handful of local vendors, just to benefit those in attendance. So, in the packet, there is a, a list of the criteria and what that looks like, and so we open that up to, to vendor applicants. And those are the ones that add.
Grand, is there anything in the application that needs special attention, according to sales, alcohol representation, or anything like that?
That will not be a part of the vendor, we have that on a, on a separate agreement with a, a third party that will be there. So, this is really more of your cultivated, your handcrafted type of, almost like a farmer's market atmosphere.
So, then will be approached sometime for a separate instance, I think that's probably the court action.
For the, for the, for the alcohol sales there, we were more than happy to do that, Mr. G.
Absolutely.
According to the court rules, those kinds of items that are there, and implies, and approved by the court, is that, should type, I have approval?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
And I mean, there was no problem, I mean, I was there the whole time last year cooking.
Yes, sir.
Sausage, so.
Well, ours never was, we did a fantastic job of monitoring everyone.
Yeah.
Different, standard set in place.
It went off a little bit.
Were you all in, in the number of vendors?
We had about, just shy of ten last year, which is a great number for that location there, it is a, it is a tight place with the amount of people that we have there.
Now we're out of stupid politics, you know, just set up.
That's great.
Yes, we, we do ten by ten areas, and two by tens, and some two by twos, and that's certain to set up.
How much?
How long, how long does your application process, how long do you need?
How long would you accept applicants? All of them. If we have space, things will be moved on, and then we'll accept them until, until we do the fourth unit.
We only expect, expect only, you know. Let's see, it's like, made an eye participation to a member, once maximum participation, participating vendors and then rates, I don't know, maximum years.
I would say ten is the max, right?
Sure glad to see Texas do shoes.
I love those.
They, so there, you've, in the package, you have the, the applicants that have been received through our office here.
Is there any question or need to that, please, if they felt it stands out?
There are, there are a few that have, the hey do shoes, madam, apologize, but they, they were not able to confine their space to a ten by ten, so they were not the, not the attending. We have, Casey and Krista have internally approved several, you'll see in the bottom box there.
Oh, okay.
Whether they have been approved or, or denied.
Are you getting more response to this year than you did last year?
We have received, yes, we have received more applications this year.
So, probably more people showing up to us too.
Yes.
And do you ever need a stage to do?
No, sir, no, sir, we're going to use a, a different stage.
That's why I asked her earlier, I wanted to keep this out of your mouth, so you went with a bigger stage?
I did, that's exactly correct.
Okay.
I didn't want to trump you.
No problem. So, no?
It, it might be beneficial if they're, Casey, I don't know what the direction of, of the request is, if you wanted to, just, we can go through, we can go through. Those that have either are to be accepted or.
Loving naturals were there last year.
Absolutely.
So, they're.
Yes, yes.
Try to find some further.
I will keep.
Rebecca. Reading Texas man?
Yes, they are from Almy, and they do not intend to ask you that they are looking to be. And they have a range in, and, Reading, Texas.
Shouldn't we run your buttons? Buttons, or, or.
World and children, that, that's, that's a great organization, that is a great organization.
You are, you're part of the.
They, they will not be selling a product, they will basically be promoting.
Come up with yourselves.
What they are, and so, I mean, you'll get it in your criteria, that technically, they are not selling a product.
But what they do is.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I want to.
What was this CBD?
They're around here.
Right.
They are from Decatur, Texas, and they sell CBD, and. You know they are.
The CBD you all got is zip non THC?
We have everybody's boat.
It's all derived from industrial hemp, so it's, it's not derived from marijuana, it's derived from industrial hemp. It's all legal, it's got the legal limit is zero point three. It's all grown here in the United States, it's tested twice, we test internally, and it's all some third party testing, so it's proven to be all legal. And we do have a retail store in Decatur, and, you know, we go to the city council there, and they allow us to sell it too, so it's, it's all legal, not in the states.
I mean, I can't, our doctor's office sells CBD.
Right, yes, right.
Do you, do you guys know how CBD works? And I saw a thing for opioids, right?
Well, it's, it helps a lot of people with payment versus them having to take opioids, and, you know, PTSD, and, you know, harmful drugs up there, this is the alternative, more natural alternative.
So, we, we could get into the science of it.
Right, but we just want, you know, we just go attend events all over, you know, our campaigns surrounding us, just to spread the word, and you'll get more people to be on more medicinal base, versus something to take, you know, more harsher.
Any other product cannabis?
Yes, it is, it isn't a cannabis family, but it has, the difference between hemp and marijuana is marijuana creates more THC and very little CBD, and then hemp is the other way around, it's more CBD and very little THC. And then we monitor the, we grow for the plants, and it's, it's constantly tested to make sure those levels stay where they need to be legally, so that's why we test in every batch, and all of our product tests QR code, and you can follow that batch where it was born, so.
Sir, can I, you're, you're the judge, right? Can I ask you, if I can ask the, the, your committee a question?
Yeah.
Does, how many of you guys drink wine, beer, or alcohol? Be honest, any of it. You can drink all, there were a lot of those, you can, sir, and nothing's going to happen to you. But yet, but you can drink a beer and kill somebody by driving drunk. That's it in the nutshell. You can drink a whole bottle of CBD, as much as you want, and nothing's going to happen to you. But yet, you can drink a beer, get on the road, kill somebody, or take opioids, ruin people's lives.
I, I know several people that use.
Yeah, there's a lot of people in your town.
CBD brain on their knees and stuff like that.
It, it helps children with autism, it helps with dementia, it helps with Alzheimer's, and it helps a lot with cancer, and it helps a lot with autoimmune diseases.
And I don't think our doctor's offices would sell any of these things.
That's right.
Exactly right.
That's correct. But there's, there's this been war since nineteen thirty, nineteen forty, and the people that fought it were Jack Daniels and Budweiser. They did not want any kind of cannabis whatsoever, and Big Pharma, that's the big one. So, they're the ones pushing the money, buying legislation, buying, buying everybody out so they can't have it. But the whole time, it's there in front of them to help people, that's it. You already produce a chemical really similar to cannabidiol. You buy, your body already produces that.
You get that from the.
That's what affects your white blood cells to keep you normal. So, when it gets out of kilter, all it does is add to that to make you back homeostasis or normal.
It just brings you back to normal, your body's functioning normally, so that we can feel good, we don't have pain, we don't have stress.
Y'all liable letting CDL drivers know that y'all.
Oh, definitely.
Yes, sir.
Because we also sell.
I have a CDL.
Okay, yeah, but if you guys have to go test, I mean.
I don't take CBD with TBC.
Yeah, it'll fail you.
Right.
I'm a bit anxious.
Yes.
Yeah, because.
Because the gentleman, and we won't get into that, the gentleman invented a machine that can see if you've been taking it, just like alcohol.
Right.
We do sell it now, you know, because I have a lot of customers that, you know, some are police officers, some are nurses, some work in railroad, and they buy the zero THC. And we do, and, you know, like I said, it's tested, and our labels are clearly marked on there, zero THC, you know, and yes, there could be that, that one-off where it may, but, you know, I, I make everybody aware.
I don't think it's a bad policy at all.
No.
I'll obviously be honest with you.
I mean, we could go into the science of it.
Now, I think, I think the whole thing is relevant to Crawfish County.
That's what. Weird one?
What street is it?
Yeah, we're in Jackspur at their functions, we're at Bowie, we're, we're every, you know, sixty mile radius.
You're talking about the little horse trailer that goes out there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm with you there.
I mean.
What do you use back in them days, before they had things?
That's plants.
Pioneers.
Oh, that's a good, that's a good problem, that's worse than Jack.
That's what they use. I watch eighteen eighty-three.
So, it feels like we got a variety of people, some people will be selling something, some people aren't, some people just prefer information.
Probably have a lot more applicants before we hit there. Here we go.
But ten's all they can get, it's all, if we approve each ten, that's it.
I mean, see, you got the market here, one wine, cheese, and one intrigue.
That is.
At the market, seventy-six four five oh, that is Becca Sullivan. And she helped us a lot last year, just out of all her care for Crawfish County, but she has, she has an Etsy store, and she sells place mats, and you customize them if you need one. Trays, cake stands.
There is a wiring listed in that vendor packet that will actually be a part of the Texas Sports Trail Wine Festival, not as a vendor.
So, the office sellers have one, you can have the concern, all in terms, just so by the quality?
That will be, that will be in conjunction, a part of the Texas Sports Trail Wine Festival, and Judge Mitch, we will, we'll come with that, that plan for approval. Exact same as last year, but we'll, we'll get to it, and of course, we'll get more on that. So, the Texas Sports Trail Wine Festival, instead of whether the grape bar, but spotlighting some great Texas wines.
I like the one. Well, the little vendors are counting, do you see, when we say you got the beer there?
Do you choose the crown? Correct, and then subtract the, the office seller as well.
I'm better.
Yes, sir, because they'll be a part of it.
Okay. Don't be a.
So, you got a fair, two more opening?
So, you'll be back with two more here pretty quick.
I'm at it, sir.
Okay. I wish you could get more.
Yeah.
We need to, we need to. You ready for an answer, or are you?
I, I give me more. Jimmy, I'll say.
That'll be, I appreciate you guys.
Got it, y'all bring it.
Include those, and.
Great.
Make up and work, work together.
Sure.
Over me.
Take me for yours, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Jerry, thank you.
Thank you for working.
Great. Okay. Oh, yeah, we, we didn't do. Oh.
I'm off some break, but, but hell, yeah.
I'm all boxes.
Yeah, yeah, take them a case.
Right. You're ten, that's fine.
Yes.
That's what they ask.
I didn't hear what you said.
Depends. How you doing?
So, where we at, I'm just, I'm, I'm focused, I wouldn't wait.
Yeah, that's how it is.
How you doing? You didn't hardly hear you dad, but. The deal with the opioid settlement, it sounds kind of interesting. What, um, to what extent are you, can you, are you excited to come to the. So, is it, is it pharmacy or something, or that huge?
Texas is. And this is the second. J. J. was the first one, and this last one, that's. How low it will be?
Right.
It's the second.
So, how is that, that's going to be distributed to, like, people who got addicted, or people who buy the overdoses, or, you know how that's going to work?
Part of it's going to come to the county, but how it's going to be distributed, I'm not sure.
Okay, and then the other thing that was kind of interesting was the burn ban. I could kind of hear that, so does it sound like the burn ban's going to go on for a while, or?
It was really dry like this.
And you were talking about, something about people making applications for ag burns or something?
Yes, according to your criteria on that, you, if you have a professional burn specialist.
Uh huh.
You go to the US, the NRCS out here.
What's the NRCS?
National Restaurants and Conservation District.
And you can get a permit?
You can get a permit through them.
Okay.
To do, uh, this time you go to do a burn and hospital by outfield and stuff like that.
Right.
In some of the grasslands, so they'll have to have a licensed burning manager, manager on that, at all times, and have them as a, of a fire suppression equipment there, in case I get.
Okay, all right, that's interesting, but everybody else who just wants to burn trash, they can't do it, they don't. Okay, and you don't think that's going to, you don't know that's going to be, you don't know, okay. And then they said that one, they think that one of the, the fires that you had was a downed power line, and the other one was somebody's burned.
Burning crack.
Okay, that's interesting, oh, same place?
I went over and just.
Yeah.
I didn't remember the first thing about.
That's sad.
See, that's the thing, we thought that fire, we never.
Lost of food.
It was only forty plus miles an hour.
It did ask.
Yeah, yeah.
For me, that was, that was.
I'll beat the lives, we're taking it, they have, they have, they have, they're doing.
Is that, can that person be cited?
They did it, and they're. Which, which is. You know, pull it over.
No, the person who was.
Yeah, I mean, he's, yeah, he's. He, he was cited twice, with the citation.
Okay. And you're. From your party, because I know you said that.
Burned. Tyros, bud.
Okay, so if somebody had been heard, then they could have, like, okay. All right, and then I guess the only thing that sounded kind of interesting, is this the first time the CBD thing was kind of interesting, is this the first time that y'all have ever approved that?
I'll go, yeah, I'll go, I'll go, uh, that's for that, and try to get an idea of what they want to do. I'll, I'll go look at it.
What's your name, I'm Jean Keating, I'm the help man with the enterprise in Almy.
I'm Grant Ingram.
Okay, let me just get your, get your team down.
Yes, ma'am.
You work, you work with the county, I guess, and you're doing that?
Uh, no, ma'am, I just, I'm on the, the advisory board for the Crawfish County.
Okay, I, you say your last name?
I A G R A M.
Okay, and you're on the advisory, and. Okay, and you're on the advisory, um.
The committee, yes, ma'am.
Committee, or, um, hands.
Crawfish.
And, so you've got, from what I understand, you've had eight vendors so far?
Uh, those were just approved today.
Okay, can I get a list of those, or is that in the packet or something like that? Okay, cool, thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, cool, thank you. What's your name?
My name's Grant.
Oh, good to meet you. Yeah. Well, this is my first meeting here, but I have covered commissioner for other cities, so. Yeah, no, it's not, it's pretty similar. It's really, it's here and here.
Yes.
Yeah, it's really quiet.
Yeah, I'm not sure. If you ever want to, just, I usually set a recorder up here, and just let it record, and also, um, that streams to YouTube. You go on YouTube, and go back to the recordings for future meetings also.
Oh, that's cool, okay. Yeah, that sounds really good. What is, what's the channel?
Uh, if you go on YouTube, just search Young County, Commissioner Ford, and there's a whole, they have a whole page.
Okay, let me see, because it's gotta be Young County, Texas, right? Let me see, because I've got internet here. And Texas commissioners, or you should, okay, cool. Oh, here it is.
Yeah.
Okay, so next December thirteenth.
Okay, cool, take a, take a step.
Great, yeah, let's see how they're the audios. Yeah, that's not bad.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I think it's, this is temporary. Right. And. Things turn. And then you see that we see. This changes.
What's your name?
My name's K. My name's Katie. Um, well, I don't really work there, I'm actually a journalist, I'm a freelance journalist, and I do other stuff, but I'm a friend to Ronnie Walker.
Okay, yeah.
And she kind of, I mean, I don't, she just asked me if I cover some of the meetings, so she's kind of.
I understand.
Yeah, so, yeah, I just, I live in, I live.
That's great.
And I did some other stuff for her related to, I don't know if you remember, the, um, guys who were freed from prison.
Yeah.
Or the assault trial.
Yeah.
I did that story, I did a chat text, and I did a whole bunch of stuff when I would come to town, before I moved here. Um, she would ask me to write stuff, so that's how I know her. And it just happened to be, she was like, if you have time, could you do it? And I turned.
Yeah. I said, with you two, it works out pretty well, we, I'll have a computer.
So what do they, you got a plan?
My days are coming from midweek, so.
How many, so how many decisions you guys do?
We do.
Are you, in your online, too?
Yeah.
Oh, good, so I can just see what you're doing. Uh, let's see, what's your?
It's, uh.
So you guys do, do?
Yeah.
She wants to build, build a team.
Yeah, Wednesday, Saturday.
Wow, okay.
It was crazy, I was talking to a wife, just randomly, and then.
Do you update it?
A couple hours later, I get a message.
The online version?
So, on Wednesday, we'll have a PDF for subscribers. I'll have the digital, and then we'll put two or three stories from the paper on the website, it usually goes up the day.
Then I asked this, you know, what, what's the purpose?
Unless there's something like major breaking news, and then we'll put that through me. Usually they'll go up on Wednesday, and Tuesday, sometimes we'll put it on Tuesday night for Monday's day, but usually if the day the paper comes out.
Okay, well, I need to keep my, keep my eyes open here and see what y'all are doing, because she only publishes every.
Uh, yeah.
Because they're kind of like.
To really.
I don't know, it's a little hard, because, you know, when these meetings are on Monday, she doesn't publish until the next Thursday.
Yeah.
I just asked her, I said, do me, I said, do me this one, first thing.
Because a lot of times, stories from here, we won't do it because we got to have a, kind of, press for like three or four.
Yeah.
Say hi to me.
They're all just meetings are good.
I know.
There's a lot of times, I'll, I'll leave early.
I ask the rest of the week, because I'm.
Yeah.
I've been by there or something, and I just sipped in the, make John Bar from there.
Well, it's online, but I was doing this.
That's right.
You, you didn't have that.
Right, yes, that's right.
And, um, so all this.
That would take your stage, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I know what, I know what you're doing, Jerry. What, you don't want to stay there?
I don't really, we don't write anything.
Too hot?
Oh, we have our after coverage.
So how long have you been here?
No, because the, uh. The audits are at the, they go to.
Really?
Yes.
All the ones that set up down here?
What do you think about Texas?
Oh, I love it. I actually congratulate them, reach the high school, the college, so, which is, uh, probably my best.
Yeah, I know where that is. I lived in, I went to college in Austin.
Okay.
So, yeah, and then I covered, um, I was a student for AP in UPI when I was in college.
That's been here like a lot.
Why do I do talk about? We're far.
We're in the, we're in the mind new details business, we're way past.
Oh, and I heard you in, uh, Rick talking about me the other morning.
This is really, really interesting.
Wasn't it good?
I used to do, I was in LA for a while.
Well, it's because we knew you were listening.
Which was, I mean, took a whole day.
Oh, yeah.
It was really boring.
Somebody in the background said, yeah, smosin'.
Even like, he just expected it to fall over, expecting a lady for him. That's right, yeah, exactly. Cool, county search. That's it.
Well, they go straight, maybe, I.
All right, you did say anything that.
I'll fix it for you.
Uh huh.
I don't know if she's done it.
Pulling over, then we'll impact the hours more quickly.
They just, they don't know what they're doing, or.
Well, drive really hard, I'll be pulled over. Yeah, we do.
Here, I can wait, I figured you'd be on that side anyway, so.
Well, I do need to get.
No, you don't need it no more.
That's a good story.
Everybody else can have it.
I know, but. Who's gonna get it?
What's that?
What is it gonna go for? Go to individuals?
Oh, I can't, there's a thing right now that's, uh, from Indian County.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, you get, yeah. No, I turned my lights on, please.
I guess, I guess.
I knew it was coming, lady. Gentlemen's meeting, I'm sure it's pretty quiet. Right.
Yeah, basically testing.
Right, it is.
Even though it's on the table, you don't see that. Every now and then, you know, it's not somebody, kind of, through town, going further west or something.
There's a lot going on in all these, like, people really.
So that's all.
Did you guys watch that, um, murder of the Friday night line?
I don't know.
I'm surprised you can offer a what?
To what extent?
I didn't get to see it yet.
It's good.
I've seen her face on the TV, though.
That's interesting.
So. She's a movie star.
They have.
That's once, I, once a month. I mean, I really want the real two. Now, editor covers that one, hook on from city, and it's going out here in the hospital also.
Yeah. Usually it's hotter up here.
Yeah, at least the one, the one. The one here, actually, I know, there's, there's certain things. It's carrying on all these.
So you're unlike it on burning.
Yeah, I remember, I think it's something else, that's all the money, town, and you're gonna be on that more.
That'd be great. That'd be great, yeah. Let's play. Wait, I'm bored, Hugh.
Is that your old phone? It's tricky. That's how I sound when I get up on the ceiling. I know. Mine are a lot better, like, my knee, at least when the weather changes. I'm telling you, it's great, I rub it on my knee before I hit surgery. The mark around.
Commissioner's Court, come back for ordering, here it is. Two hundred and forty-two, a. Let's see, we reached out to number thirteen, discussed consideration, Young County Courts Commission grant application, Susan Smith's name down here, but Julia Cox is going to present the, uh, that Susan fund.
Yeah, she claimed on being, she couldn't be here this morning due to circumstances beyond her control. But I'm here today to, um, we were in, this is about the application for the, now, let me go ahead and give these to you, so you can see what is going on. So we were invited to apply for the, um, uh, Texas Preservation Trust Fund. As you can see, I'll go ahead and just go through this briefly, see what it is. Texas has inherited a wide variety of historic architecture and archaeological sites that, um, reflect the diversity of all those who call Texas home. The most serious problem facing historic preservation in the state is a rapid deterioration and destruction of thousands of Texas historic and prehistoric sites. To meet this challenge, the seventy-first Texas Legislature established the Texas Preservation Trust Fund in nineteen eighty-nine. The fund is currently managed by the Texas Treasury, Treasury, Safe Keeping Trust Company, and the TPTF investment earnings are distributed as matching grants to qualified applicants for the acquisition, survey, restoration, preservation, or for the planning and educational activities leading to the preservation of historic architectural and archaeological properties and associated collections of the state of Texas. Competitive grants are awarded on a one-to-one managed basis and are paid as reimbursement of eligible expenses incurred during the project. So, we at the Young County Historical Commission were invited to apply for this at the beginning of February. So the deadline was February seventh at five PM. So, to not get the cart before the horse, but we were in a situation where we had to go ahead and scramble to get onto this year's consideration to go ahead and submit the application by the deadline, which was passed Monday, the deadline at five PM. So, we are wanting, asking for your permission to go ahead and to proceed with the.
What size of grant?
Um, it is twenty thousand dollars.
And what for?
It would be for, uh, the preservation and. There is.
This is age.
Right, it is, because there's, there's two stages for this. And Susan had some materials, so I'm kind of, this is what I had this morning, and this, she's, she's, uh, just not able to be here for things beyond her control. So yes, this is a two-stage process, you get accepted into the first round, and then after, if you make the first round, then you're invited to apply for the second round. So this is just very beginning stages.
You're saying this is a matching grant?
Yes.
Or you could have come up with either twenty thousand dollars.
Yes.
Before you can get this other money?
Yes.
And you have to spend the money according to reimbursement, there's no reimbursement, you have to spend the money.
Yes, okay.
So you guys spend forty thousand? Or it's twenty?
Yes, twenty.
And then you gotta come up with another one?
We have, yes, we have been involved in fundraising activities before, and, um, unfortunately, a lot of things in, in the history field, so to speak, you come up with history emergencies. I know it's bizarre it sounds, it actually happens quite a bit. So, there's a lot of things that we figured out on the fly, we have been involved with fundraising activities in the past, and I have no doubt that we can do this, uh, in the future. And there are things that we're also learning, too, because like I said, they just invited us to do this at the beginning of February, and then the deadline was February seventh. So, it was a scramble to get, we're not, we're not obligated for anything at this stage, it's to be a part of the process. And as, you know, we're finding out things and stuff, too, because if something ever becomes, um, unattenable for any reason, we can withdraw our application. So it's, we're not like, just committed, and we're only in the first stage anyway, we did make the application deadline, which was last Monday, and that's where we are right now.
So you already committed to that, can you?
Yes, the deadline, if you see under the submission title, it was, the deadline is, um, no later than five PM Monday, everywhere is that, two thousand twenty-two. And Archer County has also applied for the, um, Texas Preservation Trust Fund also, and there's a lot of counties, the, in this magazine, Authentic Texas, this is a recent edition. That's one thing that has happened across Texas, and this is, by no means a comprehensive list, that a lot of counties in Texas have used their historic jails and refurbished them for a number of things. And these are just some of the ideas and some of the things that some of our sister counties have done. This is by no means comprehensive, there's other counties that have done these, and, and like right now, Archer County is doing the same thing. There, I believe they're applying for, uh, a larger grant than we are, because, I, well, our condition of our jail is, is pretty good, it's in really good shape.
This is basically a master plan, and that is for a study on process of redoing, rebuilding, applying, something like.
Yes, to my understanding right now, that is, yes.
Basically a master plan, is that right?
Yes, to my understanding right now, that, yes.
But, that's how I kind of thought the figure was. I think, obviously, what this is, is it's matching grant, dollar per dollar, it is a maximum. Is it maximum grant of ten thousand?
Uh, it, it, the grants go from ten thousand to thirty thousand.
So, um, what Julia is asking for, and I think that Susan, they're asking for, is the court's support to sue that. Obviously, if Commissioner's Court, um, won't support that, they won't be considered, um, at, at that level, uh, to be funding, even if, if they were to qualify otherwise to do so. So, no, this is not for anything of preservation of the jail, it's more of a master plan to see what it's going to take to get it to shape where you can, where it can.
Um, like I said, the, we were just informed about this beginning of February, so there's more details that I need to get into, and there's some materials I'm missing this morning, I apologize for. My understanding incorporates, it could incorporate both those things, both, not just the, that's what I understand.
So what's the master plan?
The master plan is assessing. The master plan is assessing what the structure needs to keep it within its historic design. And assess what it needs and also assess possibilities for its use. So that's what the master plan has a lot, a little bit to do with everything.
The nine-three-twenty-one, General, that is hundred and thirty-seven. It's a hundred years old. Obviously, the oldest building on the interior of the square. It's got history in it. Historical Commission's doing what historical commission are supposed to do. And so I think they've, they've been very well aligned to develop a plan. I think there've been some of the state people up here from the state Historical Commission look at this facility.
Yes, they were, um, yes, just a couple of weeks.
It started in stable, self-heated, wanted to, you know, even let it deteriorate on its own path. It'd be pretty sound building for a long, long time. I know that there's other desires there, but, you know, I would support, I would support the Historical Commission to do that personally, or maybe from people above here on the court. I think that it's a great project and one that has merit.
I think so too. There's a lot of promise too. There's a, there's definitely a lot of work to be done. Um, we've taken on large projects before, and I believe that we can do this one also. And what we really want to see is to assess, we want to assess where the building is architecturally and structurally, and assess what options are for in the future for the use of the building or utilization of the building some way. So that's what we're looking at, all options. And talking to a lot of people so that, I mean, we've got a lot of innovative people in Young County, and so we're open to all ideas and suggestions.
Sure, quite so. So, I mean, this grant is just a late assessment building, say, hey, yeah, it's stressed ways now. Why can't we just do an independent contract around here and just let them say, yeah, it's good or bad? Is that, I mean, is that a, would that be a good thing too?
Uh, you know, I don't, I don't know. I bet I'm certainly open to doing that.
Yeah, I mean, just trying to think outside the box a little bit.
Yes, exactly, that's cool.
I mean, it might be cheaper.
We love that.
And plus, it's, you know, it's money to grant, if we can find a way to get it.
Y'all already sent the application in?
Yes, because...
Y'all have a copy of it to, for us to read over?
I do. I don't have it this morning. I mean, I've, we've got a copy of the application itself. I'm just a little, uh, shorthanded this mor, uh, this morning. I don't have everything I need. I apologize for that.
Susan woke up this morning, people.
Yeah, oh, no, I'm glad she didn't come, as she said. And we hope she gets well.
Jack is mad at it again.
Yeah, I got it again.
But I'd like to look over the application that y'all sent in.
Sure.
And this, this is kind of a will-see thing anyway that you sent in.
Right, so this is not even, yeah, this is, it's a two-stage process.
Yeah.
So we're, we're just having sent it in under the deadline and we're not thinking that's happening here.
See, I know there's, um, right, that's what I'm saying, that's a will-see thing, yeah.
And that is matching, so who's matching it? Us or redoing the donation? I'll take this grant year twenty-three back.
Yes, it is for two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, I'll start it on here.
Yeah. Um, no, I know there's a person that's looking at the courthouse stuff so we can do wiring and stuff right for the Wi-Fi. So, and he does old buildings. Why couldn't he move the lead? Why couldn't it was, was there not a guy, I wish that was...
Oh, he looked at it and rewired it?
Right, that's what I'm talking about. Yeah, but he's, he's, does old buildings and stuff.
He does historical buildings.
Yes.
What's his name?
Well, if you want, if you want, if you want to get somebody that gets good at what they do and they've got history, um, it's, it's got a long line of history, called Moxie. It makes all of our conferences.
Yes, we, we've actually spoken with him before. And he's, the, the firm has a lot of experience, Mr. Something. They're well, well, uh, educated and experienced too, so, yes, we're familiar with it.
Good.
Is that who you're talking about?
I don't know. I, no, I know what it's not. Do you, Jimmy?
Yeah, I've got a card.
He's got a card.
Was he with Moxie firm?
No.
Yes, okay. More options, better.
This is an actual contractor that does wiring in historical buildings.
Right.
That's all that is.
I mean, I'm just trying to think outside the box to help us out a little bit.
Oh, yes, that's what's helped us immensely in this whole time, so we're good with that.
Our insurance people have looked at it and pretty much made it two hundred and seventy-two thousand for replacement. So there is somebody.
She writing that down. Two hundred and seventy-two thousand.
So let's say you get the, the grant. You've got about a year to get it, the right twenty thousand dollars, matching it.
That should be, yes.
So here's, here's, here's...
Ten to thirty thousand.
Here's, here's, here's the caveat though. They've got to spend the money before they get the money.
Yes.
You gotta spend it before you get it.
Yes.
So you gotta have it before you spend it.
Have you known any other grants that were, that put the money?
Yeah, what we got, what we're playing for. When we got with the radios, with the, with radios, with the, uh, car parts. They sent us the money and then we used that money to buy the radio.
We just spent two hundred and forty, two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars upgrading our coating machines. We haven't spent that before we got it back.
But we ate it to feed.
All those, all, all those things, they're sharing, matching grants, even their secreters. And transportation grants, they're matching grants.
It's, yes, everything about preserving history is always a challenge.
So the Historical Commission's asking us for, for support?
Yes.
Some money for it?
Yes.
Well, just to apply for the grant, you should, it was, it felt like you had to come before us, anyway.
Exactly.
It might get us...
And we would do this, but you can understand the whole time deadline. Because we were invited, you know, at the beginning of February. And Commissioner's Court just met on the thirty-first. And then the due date was, of course, the seventh, fourth day. So we're in a position...
I really think you was invited, still five for this man, too, wasn't he?
Yes, we're invited too. Yes. It's always good to knock on doors. So when it all was done, try all, try all the doors.
What was the amount of the grant that was applied for?
I'm sorry?
What was the grant amount that was applied, applied for?
Twenty thousand.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
So, is that twenty and twenty?
To my understanding, yes, yes.
You know, there's a thing, call it as you can, is, you know?
Yeah, familiar with that, I would have that.
And, I mean, if you got a shotgun or something, donate it to Raff Law. Start making some money.
Exactly.
You're writing that down. Well...
My husband wanted a really nice set. Those are beautiful. Those are fun.
So to say you did do that, do you have a, an idea for it to, if it's all this done? To tell you what kind of position it's in?
Yes, yes, we want to assess it.
Yeah, but what are you gonna, what are you gonna do with it after that?
Well, we've got ideas, but we need to know where we are and our options before we can make any definite plans. We're looking to preserve it, but also for it to be utilized for something. Um, ideally, something that wouldn't be a burden on the tax base. That's what we're looking for, is options like that. And something that would also preserve our culture during the time. Ironically, a hundred years later, we're facing a situation, you know, where a lot of people are moving here. And I think it's great, you know, for a lot of things. But it's important to preserve the things that have allowed us to come this far successfully and made us who we are, or else it will be dismissed and replaced. So it's, it's a, a county jail, especially historic jail, is an ideal place to do that. Because buildings tell stories, you know? Even when I was, I've done historical research for decades. And it made a huge difference when I could go and viscerally touch something, be in the building. I mean, it really, I thought I understood all that stuff, but it really is a whole new level. And when you have something that's really well-preserved, like our historic nineteen twenty-one jail, the kids and young people, it's another layer of learning, like buildings do tell stories. And it's an excellent place. It's why we, also many of our sister counties have elected to help preserve their history and their culture within their historic jails. So I know that was a lot of information. We're, in the, we've been in this situation for a while. We're kind of used to it. We're having success as we're going along, get all of our options, you know, all of our ideas, and then go from there. And we've navigated quite well in the past. We've got a lot of people. Our strength is in the people of the Historic Commission, Young County Historic Commission. You've got decades of higher education, and you've got decades of experience. And they're all historically oriented. They love the people of Young County. They love the history of Young County, and they're all volunteers. And though it's their own sweat, blood, money that they put into preserving this and giving back to the community, that is our number one intention. That is our strength. And all of our members that have helped us, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for everybody. With that level of experience and that level of education, working for the entire county for free, you know, we are truly wanting to give back to our community and preserve our culture. And this is also to ensure our future, you know? A lot of people think we're just, you know, in the history, but we're really futurist. Because it's so important to preserve the things of your culture that got you here and put them out there for kids and people to be aware of. These are the things that we've learned that have helped us get this far. And also the things that you don't want to repeat, because those things were paid for also in blood, sweat, and tears. And say this, we want to be successful in the future. We're thinking about the future. This is our whole intent, why we're interested and so passionate about doing this project.
Uh, Julia? When will the, when will the grants be considered? Or, or I guess you say evaluated? When will you know what you were, when it all?
Um, well, this is for, what I know right now, I'm sorry, I don't have, like I said, this is new to us too. So we, um, it's, it's visible year two thousand twenty-three. Right now, I'm not aware of what that is, but I can find that date out for you. I can get that information for you.
I, I don't know what I think. I might have found that date, but it's probably, you know, if you were twenty-three, grant winner by involved this year, September.
Well, I do know it's a two-stage process. And so I'll, I'll just get that information and give it to you. I'm sorry, I don't have it with me right now.
What, what the commission needs is, is support of Commissioner's Court?
Yes.
To pursue that grant, even from, even from a financial perspective of it. Because if they don't, you know, if they don't have a support in the court, which they haven't had much of support in court, quite frankly. The commission would say now, you know, let somebody else just go and support it. Have the money rather than...
Yes.
This thing, you know, so it's, it's competitive grant, so they, they gotta compete for it.
Exactly, and commissioners for...
We've got to be supportive of that.
Yes. They're our bosses.
Their efforts are people. So I'll, I'll make a motion that we support Young County Historical Commission to pursue this initial grant. Um, that's that twenty thousand dollars, and it's a matching grant, so they need that to, they need that to tell the Historical Commission that this, yeah, this court will support their Historical Commission efforts in that. This courthouse is gonna have to, this courthouse is gonna have to go into that process at some time or another, not in the two biggest of issues.
Yes. Yes.
And, and it'll probably be something, some court, um, some Commissioner's Court will, won't pursue that because that was gonna be, that would be a twenty million dollar project today.
And this, we're here, we at least have experience as a county for, you know, the jail, the microcosm or the macrocosm. So it gives us more information, that future situation when it comes.
You know, what's ironic in this whole discussion, we've been talking about is, is the cost today to assess that building for its electrical, plumbing, and integrity is within five thousand dollars of what the building costs to build completely.
So this is for a complete, the cost of a complete assessment?
If you, if you're saying you're gonna spend forty thousand dollars on a complete assessment, that's what the grant, when you're matching twenty in this twenty thousand, the building costs forty-five thousand when it was built in nineteen twenty-one. So I'm saying you're within five thousand dollars of this matching grant fund and the grant within what the building actually costs to build from the ground up.
Yes.
To assess.
But, you know, nineteen twenty dollars are a lot different than two thousand.
I understand that. I just wanted, I just wanted to point out that...
No, I get it.
You know?
Yeah, that's real interesting detail.
And, and that's why I suggested too, that you might find somebody outside that, you know, might do it cheaper or whatever like that. I think, I don't know, and this is just kind of my, my heart, I got feeling on it, is, you know, so many things have been tore down historically and, you know, statues and all of that. I think it's just horrible. And I think us supporting you guys is something that's kind of, something that you need to do. I'll say because motion, I mean, I think it's very important. History's important. And then, if you listen to Ursula Savelly up today, he was talking about how our history is just going away. You know, everybody's taking it away. And in school, they don't even, hardly teach history anymore.
It's becoming digitized, and digital is very, very fragile.
Right, and, and our Texas education, they're, they're taking away history, putting in what they want to put in. And I'll, I'll say...
Just, just the Texas process doesn't make you always spending money.
Exactly, that's true.
Exactly. We're not committed to anything. So we've got our foot in the door, so we've got that option. Oh, definitely.
But I'd like to see the application we, that y'all submitted.
Well, to start this application, we need to find out what the money is that you're, that you receive can be spent, how it can be spent. If you just earmark for the integrity of it, then that's a different deal.
Yeah. And like I said, we're not spending it now, we're just looking at it. Waiting for the grant.
Exactly. Yeah, and there's two parts to, to, it can be a strong, we're not committed to spending anything. But it was just an opportunity, and we, that's how we've always operated, is to look and see what all we've got, what all of our options are.
Okay, well, motions, and if there are any further discussion, you can leave.
Yes.
Holy Father, I, all followers. Me, I'd like to see the grant come to what we signed before I agree to something totally.
We're not signing anything, like...
Well, I know, but I'd like to see what we applied for.
We're not applying for any.
Well, they are in our name because it is the building owned by our Historical Commission.
I'll be sure to get.
I'd just like to see copy of it. Other than that, I'm fine with it. But I'd just like to see what we had. Now, we can get a point here today, so I could.
If the grant comes through, that means the money will have come through Young County, right?
The matching funds?
No.
You've come up with the grants.
The grant funds might come to us.
Exactly, yes.
Y'all a 501(c)(2) fee?
Yes.
Yes.
Y'all are. I can guess for you, but I'm, I'm almost, I appreciate you guys.
Yes, I remember that, yeah, it came up a couple of years ago, so, yes.
I thought I seen y'all.
I appreciate y'all's consideration.
I think you're, I was three in favor.
Is it three or four?
Four. I don't know, I just thought I was.
I got you.
Number one?
Three.
I'm not accused, it's just, I would like to see what we sent in.
I will get through the copy as soon as possible. I'll get everybody a copy.
Oh, she just told you what she's sending in.
No, that's okay. Look at y'all.
She just told you what she's sending in.
I know, but I'd just like to see it. I'd like to see the application whenever we had it on our agenda to go and talk about.
We had planned to bring it this morning, but because of what came up earlier, yes. So it's not her, this is things beyond her control, this came up this morning. But yes, I'll be sure and get everybody a copy of our, our grant application.
Okay.
If you feel that anybody said, may not send it all to them, or you send it to John's email, then he'll send it out to us.
Okay.
I, I don't have it up. Only thing I've seen of it, I think is a blanket application of what you're talking about. Two, three-stage thing, along, stage is, you go to planning, just generally a planning grant, I think is what I would call it. You have stage two in there that would be another level. And then there would be whatever the best, the court chose to do in the end. And that's probably 35 years down the road, I'd say. Okay. Round 14 is considered, is accepted, but I guess we're considering, discussing, considering to get Lee Wiley, who finished to add Red Harbor Trellis, that 40,000 now, that 31,000.
I talked to Lee Wiley, I think Jimmy has too, but of course metal is doubled from what it did the last time we built this thing. And Jimmy and I is gonna be out there tomorrow. Hopefully, maybe you two will come and bring your chainsaw. It'd be very nice, huh?
Did y'all talk to somebody about trimming back?
Yes, uh, Michael Cook will be here at 10 o'clock tomorrow. He'll mark the, like we did the last time, he'll mark it with orange paint, we'll chop, we'll take down everything, so we'll have a skid steer out there and pole saws. And y'all wanna bring a skid steer? Go ahead. We'll pull the poles out when we get done.
You're gonna go ahead and dare down the harbor?
If we can, yeah. We'll make it a lot easier. And I think basically we've got one day to do it, you know? Because it's supposed to rain, rain, rain. Don't.
If you get started and get that, let's do it.
Yeah. So, and, and I, and Lee Wiley said he's gonna be out there too tomorrow.
Do you have a copy of this quote?
We've got that quote on, on August 18th.
The only difference is the quote between that quote and this quote is a little.
Yeah. Yep, I think you're right.
But you don't have it neither.
But he, I mean, yeah.
It's $100, that's a little.
So, I mean, it is what it is. I think last time it was $15,000 to do it, now it's $30,000. So, yeah. I said, that's the way it is right now. Man, metal is ungodly. So, but anyway, I think we should, I mean, Lee Wiley started it. I think we should let him finish it. He did a great job on it. I don't think anybody can argue that.
He's done all the.
And he's got all the metal.
All the metal located and, and given, which is available.
So I say that we, I'll make the motion that we, except we want, we, Lee Wiley to, Lee Wiley Burge to finish the construction on the yard, but once we have turned back the vines and removed the poles and hopefully Commissioner Cresco and Rogers will be there along with myself and Mr. Wiley.
I'll second that. All right. On paper, continuing on Red Harbor Trellis at over $31,000, Lee Wiley Burge. On paper, any opposed? Okay, now, discuss, consider the status of water line pair, if, if the board vote it on.
All right. They will be out there on February the 28th, and they dedicated the whole week of February the 28th to do the water lines and finish it, the project. Heard Jason Cotton game and John Mayans.
20 minutes of this month.
Yes, sir.
Is that water turned off right now, man, or they're gonna be big water bills?
Certainly, certainly.
Is that water where it's at turned off right now?
I think it turns back on for activities that might be there.
And then turn it back off.
Turn it off. Okay, I don't think any action necessary, maybe don't have. Okay, 16 is, um, discuss, consider operational activities in unincorporated areas of the county. Ran this by Jim Allison. And it appears that they already have that. If you read that email, you can see him.
I just got an email. Yeah. Says Derek Bullock, under section 551A, Transportation Code. Permit the operation of unregistered off-highway vehicles.
Well, is.
Yes. I'll get to the back of it.
I didn't see.
It's right after that. Close.
Okay. I asked a question, do all counties have authority on Texas transportation code? Transportation Code 551A.055 allow off-road vehicles used in certain areas like unincorporated communities and sub-conditions? Is the question that I posed to him. And he says, Judge Bullock, no. He said, section 551A.055 Transportation Code permits the operation of unregistered off-highway vehicles on certain roads and under specific conditions. Certain master plan communities, it's in parentheses, certain master plan communities are within two miles of a golf course on 35 mile per hour speed limit road. No approval is required. However, section 551A.054 authorizes the county to prohibit such operation if the Commissioner's Court determines that the, that it is necessary in the interest of public safety. So it's a pro, it's one that authorizes us to prohibit something, but not to, not to grant authority that's already there. For a few statute. Yes. So it's, it's.
So it's, so in other words, it's a blanket deal, so if they catch somebody doing it on the road and they're licensed and doing all the stuff and everything good.
Actually, it's not what I, it, it's an authorization statute. Um, I'm not, they have that, they have that built. This is a regulation that we, as a court, can intervene in, in these certain conditions circumstances of prohibiting the use of those vehicles, it's prohibited to, where we have our authority. Like, we have any authority, but.
Do they have a certain amount of CCs, Travis? Is it like 35 CC?
I sure.
Miles per hour is 35.
Yeah, but there's a.
50 CCs? Is it 50 CCs, something like that? I mean, I can't quote it off my head, and I'm sure you can't either.
But it's, it's like a lot of pages on that. And actually, the bottom section of that is what really, that we are required to look at.
And then if they have like a flag, a triangle or something like that, or.
Yeah, I'd be able to do it. Obviously, now they have to be, uh, like, registered, but not, or licensed and not registered.
Yeah.
We'll see in HOA area, or set a home division bill with, or golf course, they're, they're on the rules.
Right.
Right. But you have a place like in Timber Ridge.
Right.
Right.
Then you write them a ticket for riding the golf cart up in the United States where the problem arises.
Right.
He could, I know. An 80-year-old man going to check his mail. You got driver license, Travis?
Maybe.
Why, maybe?
But, well, they're, they're a subdivision, but they're not incorporated, or they're in the unincorporated area of the county because they're not at the city limits. They still can't sit there, they're, they're bound by what the original subdivision rules and guidelines are, right?
Which is where the Commissioner's Court could intervene.
And we can make it legal for them to do it.
Unless they do it with HOA.
Right.
Yeah.
So Jim said it's, it's already in place, so I guess it's already in place.
But stopping them out there.
Well, that's pretty, pretty impressive, statute, oh, that's pretty.
Yeah. I wish, I said you can't get it.
I don't think anybody's getting confused. Give Commissioner's Court, with authority authorized, something that uses already in place, authorize.
Well, it doesn't give you, I mean, it's already there. The law says it's already in place, but you can go and, we can wear.
Prohibiting.
Right.
In certain, right. In certain communities on roads to have a speed limit of 35, we prohibit that.
But, I mean, most of our communities are, I think the only one that I can, that kind of sign would be temporary.
Well, in subsection B up there, it says that in addition to the operation authorized by section, uh, 051A.055, Commissioner's Court of the county describes a subsection C may allow an operator, or operators of unregistered highway vehicles or all parts of the highway that is located in an unincorporated area of the county as both speed limits go within 35 miles an hour and subjected only to the county, uh, finish it, go down to different things depending on where your county is. So it gives you that authority to, if you want to.
Well, I think the registration, the, the, it's pretty adoption of the owner and probably for an identity factor, because the registration can't be transferred to another person. You sell that vehicle, they've got to go back and re-register again. If this other, this other person wants to register, you know, it's, you know. It's not something to be transferred from one one to the other.
If it's a territory, my fact is nothing we can do here really. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Route number 18. Discuss, consider an application permit to install indoor culvert in County Road Highway Six Line, Flat Rock Road, State Department.
Yeah. This was put in by White Lake already. I, I've mentioned it to some of the other commissioners, that, uh, when they come in and just put in something, the only repercussions we got is to either take it out or just try to get it passed through Commissioner's Court. I think we need to put some more emphasis on getting that culvert permit, like maybe run another ad in newspapers, uh, get it out there that they have, or required to have that to put in an entranceway into the county road system. I mean, because I had more than one that has done this in the last month. And having to get them to go back and fill out a permit and then bring it to court, and they're not even asking what size culvert they're putting in. Luckily, both of these two that just done it have been good sized culverts, and they've done a good job with them. But like, I've got all these subdivisions going in east of town here, or not really subdivision, but these plat, where they platted this off in 10 acres and more. I have one road with 16 culverts on it. I'm getting with him today to make sure he had culvert permits and knows we gotta do this. But I don't know if we need to advertise it more or what, that that's required.
Talk about one that we've already, that's already been through here?
Oh, I've got one that's already been through here that was done that way. This one here is done that way.
Talk about the subdivision that was through?
No, it's not, it's not nothing we can approve. There are 10 acres or more plats. I've told them they could bring a plat and get it approved through the court, but it's up to them to do that at that point, as long as they're following, doing 10 acres or more.
Who knows what was 10 acres?
I know, the only thing I got to control anything is my culvert permit right now, or something permit, so.
And I think what he's talking about too, he had a 12-inch put in and they needed a 24, right?
Yeah, I had one of them, Flat Rock, they put on the side of the hill. It's a 12-inch culvert they put in. It needed a 30-inch culvert in there to keep from flooding. And they washed my road out back. They came back, we got, I took their culvert out and made them buy the right one. We put it in and got a permit there. But we just need to make sure they know they need to come to us first.
Well, I think public awareness is, though, probably what I'd go. I would, I would suggest sending this one of our contractors that we know of that can handle.
In the county? Okay, the one I'm working with today, there on this one, EJAC County.
Well, I know.
We're gonna have to extend outside our county to keep it from happening.
There's others, there's people outside the county that we know of, for, like, White Lake.
Well, I called him personally, told him, hey, we gotta get permits on this, he's the one filled this out and, uh, for the owner, but, uh.
He knows that now, maybe.
He knows it now. Robert Register, he lives in the county and one of them. I ran one through here last week for him. I caught him in the middle of putting it in. And I, yeah, that'll work with, and we run it through, but we gotta get something or we're gonna wind up having to pull them out again. Or like that lady, she caused me a quarter mile of road when it last spring. They're like that lady, she caused me a quarter mile road when that last spring, so...
Yeah, there's some law there, just like the subdivisions that go in, it's more than, more than ten acres, and made all of the other, or made all of the other sections that are associated with that.
Right.
The, what we finally have, they've got one to do, didn't want to do that, but they, what they should do is come to County Judge's office here and file with the county judge that...
They should, but these people do this for a living, and if they don't got to, they're not going to. They have a place going on in Jack County, one in Young County, one in Houston, and San Antonio right now. They build three homes at a time. They got their own crews, whenever they come in on end of funds down there, they know the rules just as good as we do.
What, what they should do is file that plat here where the county judge rang it up here in a, in a meeting, and let everybody locate it and certify it meets that expectation. One of them thought they met that expectation, but didn't. Finally, the rest of them, if they didn't, and they were going to have to file the plat, file it as a plat. We had two or three that did bring those in to us, and they have certain certificates of exception that said, you know, somebody else, you know, if they divide, if some owner divides, they're part of that in half, and it's not more than ten acres, and it doesn't meet all those other requirements, then they may have to file a plat.
Unless it's expanded.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a few exceptions there.
My big deal is getting them to, getting them to, we don't have no teeth as far as this culvert permit deal goes, other than going out there and taking their culvert back out. That's the only thing we have.
Well...
And you go out there and they've already installed it, if it's undersized, that's your only option.
Yeah, and then a few of those, if you want to get some, so we would have to get a permit for, for this one here.
Yeah.
I mean, I can tell when they file, well, they're not one of them, they're just...
Hopefully, they do it first, and I have talked to Harley about it.
Harley.
And they're saying, and they're saying...
What you meant, what you said. No, that's what you meant, yeah, Harley.
Maybe that, I think it's a package that she gives a bit, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Maybe that, that should be in that package, or if you use it or not, it shouldn't be in that package.
I agree.
But that, this could have been the fourth one I took out here lately, if I'd, if I'd just not caught who it was and found out. It took me a while to find out who put in the culvert, whose land it was, and all that. It takes time to do, to even get back to find out why Lake done it, and I can get him to do it, fill out the permit. But it just takes half a day to do that, and it gets aggravating after a while. I mean, it's just my job, but sometimes it gets aggravating.
I'll save it in his way. Right?
Yes, to do this culvert permit. I'll make the motion to do that, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Get your stuff on.
Yes.
Thank you, Mike.
Motion, prove it. Second, prove it. Motion, address. Prove it. On paper? Okay. I missed something, let's do this separately. Okay, with the court's schedule, it'll jump down to twenty-one. This came in after the, after the agenda was made, then we had to add this in here. Discuss, potential searches, contract, Allison Bass McGee LLC regarding flood power tax paid application. Understood the report right, that we wish to engage Bob Mess again on that?
Yeah.
So, this is just a retainer?
This is a retainer.
Right.
I'll come to negotiate.
With that agreement, the flood power will pay you...
His fees.
It shouldn't be entered tax, I think.
Is that what you read?
Hundred fifty dollars an hour.
Three hundred.
Three hundred?
Three hundred dollars an hour.
Two hundred dollars?
By partner, we got two hundred seventy-five dollars an hour.
Hundred fifty dollars for driving.
Client will be billed a hundred fifty for services injured in paralegal. And a hundred fifty dollar amount will be charged for all actual transits or in lieu of our charge. Time be, food, rent. They don't say in here about the, 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 the bad.
Oh, it won't say, and it's a green if they're with. Expect the flood power to pay his...
We have to make the work out later.
Hard quote. Losses now.
In the past, it has been. Have you talked to him about the questions we asked him prior to this, when we had a conversation with him in there, and jury room?
Did I ask him about what?
The questions that we asked him, has he found any, any notes?
Well, I haven't asked him any questions really on this question, if he wanted, if he wanted to be involved on here, he would. And he's obviously agreed to that, because I've got this retainer here, and he's also emailed me a notice for a public hearing that his tenant that was scheduled for the twenty-eighth of March.
Twenty-eighth of March.
Yeah. So, he's sent me the notice, but he said he would contact the paper and get the notice in the paper itself. And then I think he'll leave me in there by this, for real, they'll act that notice by this Friday to get it in next Wednesday, not this Wednesday, but the following Wednesday's paper, so it'll make that thirty-day requirement.
During the election, they extended the forty-third days now.
Here in the tax payment, here in the tax payment, it isn't part of a seven-day's notice, but creating the reimbursement zone requires thirty-day notice. So, Bob is implying to me, I think he explained to us twice time, that he likes to put those two together, do them at the same time. You know, I, I think we'll make, need a lot of time to, to get some of those questions asked, and just some of the feelings of the court on where we need to go, where we want to go with such tax payment. Obviously, I would send all of y'all the application from flood, flood holding company LLC, it's made up, all the application, they, that's a modified application, they've already sent a thousand dollars some time ago with the previous application, and it was in, in a location, that location's been changed.
Changed.
Changed, is what purposes it modified application against.
Okay, the money that they got on the application, is that correct number, or I've heard two different numbers? They got two eighty-one, three seventy-five that they're, that they're saying?
That's, that's their projected investment.
Okay. But I've heard it's over three hundred on another thing, so I don't know.
Two eighty-one, three seventy-five, I think is what they projected to, to be invested.
Does he have a thousand dollars one?
No.
No.
No, I, I would report on the cloud. That'd be a modified board of, a little bit. I'll ask Bob, I don't think, I don't think that's something. I'm, 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 I'm,